Greetings, everyone. Uh, this is Harlem Network News coming to you live from Harlem. And we first want to wish everyone a happy, happy Mother's Day. This is Harlem Network News, and this is Terry Wisdom. I have here with me Harlem women, some who are in Harlem right now, some who have moved to other places. But all of these people, and I consider Harlem to be a state of mind. And Harlem is representative of the entire black world and the black community. So goes Harlem, so goes the world. And that is really what we're about. Uh, Harlem Network News is a media platform that was created to provide information that is relevant to urban committees. So without further ado, I'm going to introduce some, all of the participants that we have here. We have Tina Dunkley here, who is an emeritus of the art museum in Atlanta, Georgia, and also a very formidable artist. We have also here with us, uh, Ms. Nali. And Nali is a nurse at Mount Sinai Hospital. She's an ER nurse, and she's a neurosurgeon nurse. And we also have Stephanie Berry with us. And Stephanie is an artist, a director, a writer, and producer. And she is also the co-owner and founder of BlackBerry Productions. We have Moji Alawodele. And Moji is a parent, and she's also a writer. She's appearing on a few Hulu television series and working with some feminist women's organizations. She's going to share more about that. We have Ellen DeLestine, who is chiming in from California, from LA. She's representing, uh, she attended school in Harlem, music and art, as did Tina Dunkley. So they know Harlem from that experience. We have some more music and art people in the house. And Ellen is a retired principal. She's also an amazing and incredible musician and songwriter. So she's doing a lot of working on those songs right now. We also have with us Reverend Rhonda McLean Noor. And Reverend Rhonda is an interfaith minister. She's also an actress, a storyteller, a spiritual counselor, a mother, and a grandmother. We have some amazing women with us. This is Harlem, strong, beautiful Harlem women. We have also with us Maya Jones, who also goes by Maya Green Jones. And she, all of, everybody here that's younger is my daughter, but Maya is my biological daughter. And she is coming to us. She was actually born in Harlem and attended school in Harlem. And she is right now in West Palm Beach, Florida. So there's a lot of perspectives that are coming here. We have Dr. Jaquita Agby, who is a New York person, who is a pharmacist, a doctor of pharmacy. And she is going to share some medical things with us so that we can better understand what we're dealing with. And she is in West Palm Beach also. We have Kim Harris with us. And Kim is one of our formidable new Harlem entrepreneurs. She is the co-owner of Harlem Hops. So she is going to be able to give us the perspective of what it's been like to be in the epicenter, work it, run her business, and also keep herself in a balanced mode. We have Keisha Bundrich with us. And Keisha is the daughter of Stephanie Berry. So as you can see, we're doing the mother-daughter thing. It's amazing. And Stephanie is an, I mean, I'm sorry. Keisha is an amazing writer, and she is also a mother. And she is currently coming to us from Atlanta. So as you can see, we very much have it all covered. And last but not least, we have Isato Be Grisha. And Isato is one of our Harlem iconic women who does many, many things. And I'm going to let Isato say who she is and what she does. But very significantly, Isato has most recently survived COVID-19. And she was tested, she was cleared, she went through the woods, she went through everything with it. And she is right now helping her mother, who is 84, Mama Rashida, who is a mother to all of us, who is a community activist, to heal and get through this COVID situation. So I'm just going to go right to Isato Be Grisha. And you can share a little bit about who you are, what your experience is, and how you survived COVID-19, and how everything that you are allowed you to do that. So thank you, Isato.
Thank you. So Happy Mother's Day, everybody. Glad to be here, glad to be in this space, glad to be sitting up, glad to be, you know, have the strength in my body and in my, in my, um, in my voice. And so, in my mind, most of the time. So you know how it is. So just a little bit about me, a little bit about me. So I'm the director of workforce strategies and initiatives at McKissick and McKissick. That's what I do, it's my day job. And in that, I make sure that people of color, black and brown people, get contracts and get workforce opportunities on the major construction projects that are going on in various parts of the city. And my two right now are Coney Island Hospital and the Studio Museum in Harlem. So, you know, I come in contact with a lot of people, and I try to work for the betterment of us, no matter what I do. My number one job, though, is I'm the mother of Moji over there that, with the red lipstick, and Lemuria, and Aknaton. Those are my three adult children. And then from those guys, I have seven grandchildren and one great-grandchild. And that's my number one job. That's the one I've been doing now for about thirty, thirty-five years? No, four for you, but I was, I was pregnant a year before you got here. But anyway, it was, I had a year before, that's when I started motherhood. So, but anyway, and I'm thankful for that because it's, and I'm going to lead that right into the COVID situation because if it wasn't for my middle daughter, Lemuria, talking to me on the telephone. And she asked me, you know, because as the COVID thing kind of kicked in around March 20th, you know, me and my mother, and I'm here with my mother up in northern Manhattan, in Espinac Gardens. And we started, when the word started going around, we started immune boosting. In other words, I started gathering the elderberry roots, getting the tea, increasing that vitamin C to about 1,000 milligrams a day, you know, just really trying to boost my, our immune system because, you know, it was coming. And so around the 29th, the 30th, because the shutdown happened like the 20th. Around the 30th, I'm talking to Lemuria on the telephone. The first day, "How you doing, Mom?" And I said, "I'm good, I'm a little tired." I had been running around with all this gathering. And she said, "What you doing?" And I said, "I'm laying here on the couch." And so day number two, "What you doing, Mom?" I was on the couch still.
Okay.
And the third day, I was on the couch, and she said, "Mom, something's wrong. You never on the couch for three days." And I said, "Well, I'm just a little tired." She said, "Mom." So I started taking, you know, I had started taking my temperature. My temperature was 100, 100 and, 100, 101, something like that. So that didn't seem like a whole lot to me. So I didn't, I was still not alarmed. So I think that Lemuria started talking outside of me, and I started getting phone calls from all the daughters, from the extended daughters, and, you know, Moji, everybody. Not so much my son, because he doesn't know, he's not noticing those little nuances. But, and they were like, "Something's wrong. You gotta be tested." And then I started getting scared. Okay, so, but then how do I get tested? I'm hearing on the TV that it's impossible. And just so happened that we had a relationship with a company called Forward. And Forward is one of these new concierge doctors' offices. You might see them online. I never thought about it, but it come to find out, one of the extended kids is doing IT for them. It's a high-tech concierge medical facility. They got me tested on the first of April, and on the third of April, they let me, fourth, the fourth, they let me know that I was positive for COVID. And in that period of time, chills, aches, body aches, and a lack of energy. I could not, I had dropped the, uh, the remote of the television, and it had gone under the couch that I had been laying on for days. And I couldn't, I didn't have the strength to look for it, to even reach under it to get it. I didn't have that strength in my arms. And, uh, and the thing that is the most pronounced for me is it started to get to my spirit. Like, my spirit to live was just leaving, you know? And I was having the bizarre, the most bizarre dreams that I think I've ever had. The other piece that I just wanted to share, that the funny one with me was just as I started to do this, um, immune boosting, I had gotten some eucalyptus to put in the diffuser. And I kept saying, "This damn diffuser is not working." You know? Because I could not smell it. And I had no appetite. So anyway, long story short, it seems that taste and smell are the two things that go with COVID. So I, you know, one day, I got up and I said, "Oh, I think it's working." Because I started to, you know, smell it. By the time I got to the doctor on the first, the doctor said that it looked like I had had it for at least two weeks before I got to her, which meant that I'm walking around Harlem infecting everybody, right? Or I got infected in that way. People ask, "How did you get it?" I have no idea. I was doing minimal moving around, Whole Foods, you know, that kind of thing. But I didn't realize I was COVID positive until I went and got tested. So, um, you know, that was the scary part about it because I realized, you know, I had exposed everybody who I had been, you know, in contact with. The other piece is that my mother, she's 84, and she had a home health aide. And of course, when I found that I was positive, I told her. And so then she decided she wasn't coming back anymore. So, and you can't blame her. Although I guess my other piece is, maybe you're the one that brought it to us, don't know. But anyway, so that left me here to care, give, as well as heal. And that was when, that's when, that's when it got really hard. So I'm here now, we're in May. I was cleared about, I went to the doctor and had a full workup, like about 15 days after I was, you know, positive. And I'm, I'm great, breathing is good, everything, never had to go to the hospital. My mom, she's never been tested, per se, but her asthma kicked up kind of strong. And she lost, and she got very weak. And she's still weak, but stronger than she was two weeks ago. So we've continued with our ginger, with our garlic, with our vitamin C, and all those sorts of things. And so still, still trying to keep that immune boosted. And the EMS has been here four times, I'm sorry, seven times since that because she, because of her weakness. And we weren't sure whether, you know, we needed to go to the emergency room. But we made a decision as a family that we were going to thug it out right here. And that's what we've done. So we have not gone to the ER. We've taken care of ourselves. We're on the other side. Mom is sitting up. Hallelujah.
Okay, okay. Well, we are very, very happy to hear that story. And we are grateful even for you to share because it's a survivor's story, and it's a personal story. So, you know, people know that someone can get through it. And we're just keeping the prayers up and the energy up. We know that your mom is stronger than all of us. And I believe that that was an executive choice to say that she was going to stay home because we know that here in Harlem, once people get to the hospital, relatives can't get to them, and you don't know what's going on.
And that's what it was based on. We knew that once she got into the hospital, we would lose all ability. And we weren't in touch with the primary care, who gave us Plan A, go to the hospital camp. Plan B, increase some of her general medication. Hey, Janay?
Okay.
All that was taken, so we weren't being irresponsible about it. We kept in touch with the primary care, but we just felt like that was the best way to go.
Okay, okay. So we're proud of you, and we support you. I'm going to go very briefly to Sister Nali Nesbit. And Nali is an emergency room nurse. She is also a neuro nurse, and she's on the front line at one of our major hospitals here in the epicenter. And she will share about that and just what the journey has been, and advice to all of us that are here.
Hello.
Okay. We can hear you, you can just speak up a little bit.
Okay, hi, everyone. Good afternoon, and Happy Mother's Day to each one. Hi, my name is Nali Nesbit, and I formally work in the ER. Currently, the last five years, I've been working on neuroscience. I am not seeing. So we went from a, a notice that this new disease was coming about. Every afternoon, we would get briefing on what's expected for the night shift in the morning, what's expected like on a day-to-day shift-to-shift basis.
What's happening?
I'm not sure if I lost the camera.
No, Janay shared her screen by mistake.
Okay, okay. Okay. Sorry, this is for those of you who have just joined in. This is Harlem Network News. And apologies, we just experienced a little bit of technical difficulties. But Harlem Network News is a new media platform that has come about really to keep the Harlem communities and the urban communities of the world informed. So we're going to continue. Today, we have Harlem women, and they are all speaking to us about COVID-19 and the motherhood experience. We were just speaking with Nali Nesbit, who is an ER and neurosurgeon nurse at one of our major hospitals. So go right ahead, Nali, thank you.
So like I was saying, we went from not knowing what to do as a shift-for-shift basis to getting a hold of what's the plan that our facility was going to follow in terms of isolating. And so we went from separating suspected COVID patients to...
I think, I think we're losing Nali. We're going to come back to Nali because...
She just muted herself.
Oh, okay. Are you with us, Nali?
Yeah.
Okay, you had just muted yourself. So you can pick up, you were expressing about COVID patients and regular patients were being separated, and just what the beginning of that journey was, and that most, you didn't know exactly what had just come and hit. Yes, so continue.
So we went from separating our suspected COVID patient or positive COVID patient to different, a different building, different floors. They shut down several of the floors, like for clinics and rehab, so they could convert those. We went to, from having a hallway that's like the lobby with structures for additional room to screen and also to put the patient as we expected the numbers to explode. Happily, last week, we were told that we down to one-third of what our COVID population is. Prior to that, we had a song. Each time a COVID patient was discharged, we were able to dial an extension. And there was a song that gave us so much courage, it says, "Here Comes the Sun." It wasn't really this song, but it was the joy to know that one more person went home versus one more person died. And the reality of it is that we still have a few that's dying, but we have a lot more. We hit the 1,000 marker of 1,000 discharge last week. And for us at the frontline, it was the most encouraging thing because, of course, when we turned on the media, everyone is so negative, it's so devastating, it's so depressing. So we held on to those little gains. Each one of those, each one, we heard that extension played that song, it was a joy. When they left my floor... Hello?
Yes, go right ahead, Nali, I'm sorry.
When they were discharged from our floor, we played this song, but every single staff would come out and cheer for them leaving the floor because we know what we were up against, those negative numbers. So each discharge for us was a victory over the statistics that we were bombarded with every day. So I'm excited to share with you guys and to encourage all those that's out in the land that things are getting better. We are not out the woods yet, but things are getting better. Not everybody needs to be in a ventilator. Several patients are more now on high-flow oxygen, non-breather masks, and then being tweaked down to nasal cannula, which is still oxygen supplement, but as the number come down and you can get down to a nasal cannula, you know the patient is progressing. So we have put a combination of things that we always have done with some new strategies to just become victorious over this pandemic and get our numbers to improve. So we are coming out the woods as far as that is concerned.
Okay, thank you, Nali. And I know that Nali had also shared with me that she always goes through a process. When, before she goes to work, she has a certain prayer, a certain psalm that she says. She girds herself up spiritually, and she was doing that before COVID. And she continues to do that and feels that that kind of energy because initially, a lot of the nurses and doctors did not have the PPE that they needed. So they were afraid as they were there. So I'm going to go right now to Dr. Jaquita Agby, which is going to give us some of the medicine and science that has impacted this COVID. And I know we have all heard so much on the news here, there. So I'm hoping that Jaquita can clarify some of it for us. And for those of you who have just joined in, this is Harlem Women Speak on COVID-19 and Motherhood. And this is Harlem Network News. You can find us at HarlemNetworkNews.com. So thank you, Dr. Jaquita Agby.
Okay, hello, my name is Jaquita, Dr. Agby. And I've been a pharmacist for about 14 years now, so it's been some time. Graduated out of New York, Auburn, New York, and I moved down to West Palm. Actually, currently teach high school level as well as working as a pharmacist. So I'm pretty much on both lines, it's really interesting at this point, right? So just seeing the educational point of view and how it's affecting children, as well as, you know, now seeing the medical point of view as well. So I can definitely get both viewpoints as needed. But what we know right now is that approximately 8,000 cases, right, in this country, deaths related. We have 64 new cases of pediatric cases, a new syndrome that just got discovered, where they're presenting a syndrome that looks like Kawasaki disease. These children are having rashes, fever, sometimes swollen lymph nodes. And the bad thing about that syndrome is cardiac arrest can arise from that. I think there are approximately three patients that died from that. So this is really definitely a virus that we cannot take lightly. We see with Noli, thank you for your input, and Asante as well. We see that it's something that can affect anybody, everybody, right? It's a respiratory virus, which we, it took a while to discover that it's transmitted airborne, right? At first, we thought it was just the droplets and touching of cardboard and steel or inanimate objects, right? Because the virus can stay on inanimate objects for days, right? Cardboard about two days, steel approximately maybe three. So we've been trying to take precautions with the spread of it, in terms of washing our hands, wearing face masks. But that's not enough. We also have to make sure that we are immune-building because it's not the fact of, is it going to affect everybody, right? It's, if it affects you, are you going to be able to, your own immune system defeat this? Currently, there's no real treatment for it. Doctors have been given antibiotic called azithromycin, mixed with something called Plaquenil. And of course, oxygen for those that need it because it does affect the lungs. And that's the deadly part about it. Not only does it cause weakness, but if it gets to your lungs, that's the deadly part, right? Pneumonia. Presentation of it would be fever, feeling like maybe cold, food-like symptoms. So everybody knows that that's like muscle aches, fever, lethargy, not wanting to get up, weakness, not wanting to eat, issues with taste, right? So those are the telltale signs of it, especially the taste part and the lack of breathing, right? Not being able to breathe. They, currently, we are, not we, but they're working on coming up with a vaccine. The trials are going to be happening sometime in September. So we may not see a vaccine until 2021, right? They are testing antiviral medication called, what's the name of that? Rindazabir, that actually works against RNA synthesis, this is an RNA virus. And so until things come out, are we going to have to quarantine, continue to quarantine, right? Social distancing, because we don't even know how or when you're going to get it, right? So that's what I would recommend. And also, because today is Mother's Day, we need to make sure that the kids are protected, right? Because that syndrome did come out, and they saying that it is connected to COVID, they don't know yet. So make sure that you're making sure your kids are safe. And, but also I want to say, school. I know school is coming right around the corner. We got summer, but school is coming back around. And I'm hoping that they're postponing, they're continuing to allow this virtual schooling to take place. Because once the kids get together, and we haven't figured out the solution of how to stop the spread, we don't want that to be something that the children undergo as well. Another, one last thing, one last thing. They just found out in China, they did the small study in China, where they found that certain patients that are recovering from COVID, that also have COVID, it's being discovered that it exists, the virus exists in semen. So they don't know if it's infectious semen, the semen of the patient. So we're not sure if it's infectious, the virus is in there and it's infectious. So possibly through ST, you know, STV, possibly, we don't know yet. So we really got to be careful with this virus because we don't know what it is yet, right? Until time, only time can tell us what this virus is all about. So we definitely have to take all necessary precautions.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Agby. And if you could just say, because I've also been hearing from some of the medical professions, professionals, that it has been manifesting itself in a vascular way, heart, like stroke. And I think our nurse, Nali, had said that some of the patients, they are treating them like they would stroke patients. So can you just say a little bit about that?
Well, okay, well, this is a virus that, like all viruses, most viruses act in the same way. What it does is they have these proteins... What it does is they have these proteins that exist on its surface. And these proteins, once the virus gets into your body, right? Within the mucosa, through your nasal cavity, through your mouth, it likes, it's going to attach onto cells, right? So it'll attach onto the cells within your throat, right? Mostly, that's what we've been seeing. But it also has an affinity to cells in the lungs, as well as on the heart. So really, what the vascular part that we're seeing has, is like a secondary reaction. So the first reaction is, okay, we got this virus coming in, attacking the cells, taking over, rapidly dividing, right? Causing havoc within the immune system. So that's the first line. Second line is, once it does that, now we have the body trying to fight back after some time, causing this really a massive immune response. So that's what leads to the vascular part of it. The lungs not working prevents blood oxygen flow, which now has an impact on how the blood is going to flow, how the heart's going to pump. Heart's not pumping correctly, you can end up definitely with clots. So that's pretty much how it turns into vascular. So the most people that have this issue, of course, would be smokers, patients with diabetes, high blood pressure, cardiac issues. Those are going to be the ones that they have these underlying issues. You're going to see that present in more worse form.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Agbi. And we're going to move on. I'm just gonna, this is Terry Wisdom and this is Harlem Network News. And today is Mother's Day and we have some amazing mothers, Harlem women, who are speaking on COVID-19 as well as on motherhood. I am going to move, but I want people and Dr. Agbi to keep in mind, because we also know that there has been a study that's saying that people that are more impacted by COVID have a lack of vitamin D.
Vitamin D, yeah.
Vitamin D. So we're here, we're just trying to get information.
Vitamin D is definitely is a vitamin that's going to help with your immune system. And there are studies linked already with influenza that it has a really, people that have a good vitamin D level, usually I think it's between 20 and 30, but you have to talk to your doctor about your level. They can combat and fight the influenza virus better, right? Better outcomes. So if you compare it with the coronavirus, which seems to be more virulent, right? Causing more havoc and within people. Definitely, it's important to have that D3 level. And that D3 level, a good D3 level is associated with a better outcome. People that are not, and see, we're in southern states. So we do get a lot of vibrant sun. We're out there. But those that are in the northern states where it's still cold and you're not getting a lot of sunlight, that you are at a higher risk for vitamin D deficiency.
Okay, okay. So that's very helpful. We have Reverend Rhonda McLean-Nor here with us. And I would just, we're going to segue because we want to hear from everyone. But if you could just share from your spiritual counseling perspective, what has been going on in terms of some of the emotional and psychological impacts of COVID and of sheltering in and all of that? And then we're going to just have anyone that is here really speak to what their personal journey in the COVID experience. And we do have some people that are in a more rural area. And then we have those of us who are here in the epicenter of Harlem, which is urban. And it's a completely different thing in terms of how we're operating and what we're experiencing. So Reverend Rhonda Akanki-McLean-Nor, thank you. We can hear you. Unmute, unmute. Thank you. All right.
Everybody, and Happy Mother's Day to all those who are birth mothers and those who mother others. So I'm honored to be on here with such a group of women whom I love. Most of the people that I've been speaking to and providing counseling for are dealing with a sense of hopelessness that this will not end. And because they keep coming up with new things, as Dr. Jakwita said, and now the children, as of today, I was on another program and people are now really freaking out about the fact that they don't know what the children have and what they're getting. So there's a sense of hopelessness, a sense of isolation, a sense of nothing matters anymore in the world. So you've got a group of people who are being very vigilant about wearing the masks and the gloves and, you know, social distancing. And then you have this other set of people who feel like nothing really matters anymore. So why wear, since you don't know how you're going to get it, why wear this or that? So people are feeling really angry that there's not, that you don't know how you get it. They're feeling angry. Some people are feeling like the world is ending and there's no explanations or hope. So this is a time when we have to utilize it. We're hearing all these things around us and it becomes overwhelming and frightening on a daily basis. There's somebody that's passed. We're losing loved ones. I've lost a lot of people that I know and people are being hospitalized. A lot of elders are passing. So people are feeling like.
Okay. Reverend Rhonda, are you with us?
Yes, I thought somebody was trying to say something.
Continue. If anybody needs to mute their background, please do that. And this is Harlem Network News. And we are speaking with Harlem women on COVID-19. And Harlem is a state of mind and so goes Harlem, so goes the world. So continue, Reverend Rhonda. Thank you.
Thank you. So people are feeling all kinds of things that they've never felt before. There are a lot of people who are single and live by themselves and aren't getting a human touch. And they're feeling that and are becoming very depressed. So it's a time, if we look at it a different way, all those horrible things are happening and it's devastating. We hear sirens every day, all day long. So you know that somebody's being rushed to the hospital, probably related to COVID. So during this time, we have to think of it like we're at war. This is what happens when people are at war. You're quarantined, you can't go out, there are curfews. And what do we do in this time? It's like when you talk about life and death and that dash in between. We have an opportunity to do big things with that dash. This program came out of a need to communicate and give information to everyone. So during that dash, we have to find some grounding spiritually. If you have not connected to some kind of spirituality, and it doesn't have to be whatever you believe in, but you can do some kind of spiritual practice to keep your mind clear and not become overwhelmed. That practice could be you waking up in the morning and saluting the sun or the earth, drinking water all day long, waking up, drinking water in the morning, drinking water at night. It helps you to be clear and cleanse out your body so that you can have a clear mind. Connecting to others through Zoom, through calling people on the phone you haven't spoken to. Sitting still and connecting to something beyond yourself. If you just sit still and don't listen to the TV, you know, have an hour per day, will you just sit still and ground yourself? Put your hand on your own heart, listen to your own heartbeat, massage yourself. Sit still and ask the universe, God, or whatever you believe in, to come to you and give you a groundedness and a sense of safety. In order for us to make it through this, we have to not stay on the television. You do have to be informed. Deal with the social media, deal with the television, but then you have to stop and just take time for yourself and to listen, listen to what's inside.
Reverend Rhonda, I'm going to segue to somebody that is actively doing that. I'm going to go to Tina Dunkley, who is an artist in Atlanta. And I know that she can share how she is coping and how she is creating. And then we're going to go to some of the other artists because they have taken this in. And Reverend Rhonda is correct, Harlem Network News is a baby born out of COVID-19. We were thinking about it for a long time, but based on how we see that our people are being informed and the fact that initially, a lot of people of color thought, black, I'm black, I can't get it. And that's because they did not see themselves on the television and they only found out black people were getting it when black people started dying. So knowledge is power and we've got to take care of us. So without further ado, my wonderful, beautiful artist roommate, Lincoln University in the house, talk to us. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Terry. And as they say in the South, quite a bit, bless you. Thank you for including me in this forum with these wonderful sisters, mothers. I'm glad to have this opportunity and to specifically come after you, Rhonda. Rhonda, I see Rhonda Akanki?
Yes.
Okay.
And speak up just a little bit, Tina. Thank you.
Okay, let me, I'll talk a little louder. I was hoping to come after you because all of what you were saying about the news that we're ingesting every day because we're so anxious. The whole idea of turning it off is really, will give you a tremendous amount of peace and you don't have to worry about missing anything because it's on a complete 24-hour cycle. And having said that, I do live in Atlanta, having grown up in New York. In fact, my first job was in Harlem during the 1970 census, right after graduating from high school. In any case, what I did want to point out, how I'm doing this, because I am living alone and I am within the greater metro area of Atlanta. But Atlanta, of course, allows, we live in a park. The whole city is a park, basically, when you think about it, because there's so many trees. So you, we really do have access to being out in nature and I have been taking advantage of what I call nature baths. Going into Stone Mountain Park and actually hanging my hammock between the trees and, you know, they're just really decompressing that way. But also, I wanted to point out for anyone who might be interested in this, I have a dear friend in Salvador Baguía, Veronica Gómez and her friend from India. And they're conducting long-distance Reiki healing on Monday evenings at 8 o'clock, where they have this wonderful music that's on WhatsApp that you're playing. And they're doing some type of ceremony based on the names that I've provided, who, the names that I give them and the location in the world that they are. And I actually do find it incredibly, a very peaceful engagement, as well as I do meditate, transcendental meditation and also through the Buddhist Water Moon Refuge. So there's several, these things have really been a part of my life before the COVID and they've become even more so. So that's what I wanted to say about how I'm dealing with. I just finished a rock garden, so I'm having, my communion is with nature right now and it will continue to be so. I dream about returning home to Brooklyn. But I recognize that where I happen to be right now, it's okay.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you, Tina Dunkley. And I'm going to move to another one of our major artists. And she's here in Harlem, in the epicenter. So Stephanie Barry, do you want to share with us what you've been doing, how you've been coping? And just what's happening for you? And that may help some of the other people that are here in the city. Because what Reverend Rhonda said, here in New York City, it's way different than other places. Like just going to get your mail is a frightening experience. And there are people, so thank you, Stephanie.
I've been going through an array of experiences. Sometimes I wake up feeling hopeless, depressed, you know? And someone will call, or I'll have a Zoom. I speak to my daughter Keisha every day and, you know? And then once I get up and start moving, I try to accomplish one creative thing every day. And then one, I have a little ritual, something creative, something for my spirit, something for the body, something for the mind. And so they're mixed experiences. But BlackBerry Productions, my theater company, was created to give voice to or articulate the stories of marginalized people and marginalized by our society. So this is a tremendous opportunity, an unfortunate one, but tremendous opportunity to document and tell the stories of this profound moment in history that we are experiencing. Capturing the authentic voices and feelings of the people on the frontline, the people on the back, the people who are just at home, all the different voices and document them. If we all remember, what is it, Harriet Beecher Stowe's Uncle Tom's Cabin had a tremendous impact on the anti-slavery movement. Some people say it prompted the Civil War. Theater was one of the most important vehicles in educating people about AIDS. And it was through theater that it even impacted policy around AIDS. So one of the things I've started to do is to begin to talk to people, document, journal. I've been in touch with a lot of other artists. We do Zooms on a regular basis to see how we can turn these stories into something that is not only documents, but feeds us all with hope, even the negative stories or the sad stories. Because we've been here before in terms of the evolution of humanity, there've always been pandemics. You know, so we've been here before, even though sometimes it doesn't look. I just revisited Oedipus, which was written in 400-something B.C. And it is amazing how that ancient story is so applicable today. I saw a reading of it with, I think, theater and the war. I can't remember the name of the company. So anyway, so I've been aligning myself with artists to start to collect our own memories by journaling, our own experiences on a day-to-day basis. And also, I'm starting to interview people from many different experiences to begin to collect those stories and hopefully one day, you know, make it into theater. Creativity is born and nurtured in stillness. And so it is in this stillness that if we allow it, I mean, we're very spoiled as Americans. Even the poorest of us have, you know, cell phones and flat-screen TVs. And so it's hard for us to have the discipline, the discipline to be still and not depend on our validity for life and reinforcement on something outside. So this is almost forcing that. You can either embrace it or be depressed. So I just want to say the stillness is extremely, extremely important. I started letter writing with my grandchildren too.
Okay, okay. I mean, we're creative people and we're getting creative. I'm going to come back to you, Keisha, because Keisha is Stephanie's daughter and Keisha is also a writer. And well, maybe you want, would you like to chime in, Keisha? Just in terms of the process that you and your mother are going through at this time and how you're supporting each other? And then we're going to segue because we have an intergenerational group here. We have us and most of us know each other or we know each other vicariously or we raised one another's children. So we all have a connection and that is what Harlem is about. And Harlem Network News, that is what we are about. We are about the people. And it's very interesting because as people of Harlem, people of color, urban people. we actually are experiencing two viruses. As our Dr. Myolanga Kurenga said last week, that as African people, we are experiencing the COVID-19 virus. And then, we're experiencing the virus that is the racism, the pathology of racism. So, two things are happening, and it certainly has come to the forefront, like, this week, as people are getting choked hold in Brooklyn, because they don't have a mask on, and, you know, getting shot and killed jogging while being black. So, it's coming at us. So, Keisha, would you like to chime in? And we're, we're gonna be a little bit over, this is important, this is a first. We have a lot of powerful people here who have a lot to say. So, we're gonna try to let everybody say something. And so, Keisha, do you want to share? Because this is Mother's Day and the mother-daughter thing. And obviously, the apple doesn't fall far from the tree, because I've seen some of Keisha's work.
Well, I've had a, hello, everyone. I've had a very, a much different experience than a lot of people. A lot of, at one point, I was feeling guilty for not being able to take the time. Like, I felt like I should be, I should have all this time to spend with my kids and teach them something, and we should all come out of this knowing more, or having learned more, or having grown more, or something. And I have had zero time. I am much more busy now than I was when I was just working full-time and coming home. I'm the Human Resources Director at a, like, a kind of a family-owned bakery. And we've had to lay off maybe 90% of our staff. And I have been kind of on top of all the extra work that I've had to do, giving people the new partial unemployment and learning all about that, without being able to speak to anybody and all of that kind of stuff. On top of that, I'm trying not to be the Angela Davis of the company, because I believe that my bosses are Trump supporters. And I'm having to fight with trying to make sure that they don't... I've found myself in a, it's a whole nother thing going on, on top of dealing with what's happening around us. We have people who are not able to get to work now, because the buses aren't running, or a lot of the buses were stopped, so they can't get to work. And then, the president of the company is like, well, I don't want these people to be able to get unemployment. You fight it, and you stop this. And I'm like, wait a minute, someone, they think that everyone is trying to take advantage. Just because, I'm like, these, you know, it's interesting how society, we make ourselves each other's enemy when we're all on the same team. These are people, hard-working people, who are trying to get to work, but they're not able to. And I'm supposed to stop their unemployment, so now they don't have any, they already only get a little bit of money as it is. And then, I'm supposed to stop what little money they could get from unemployment, because the government opened up the state. It's a mess. Because we make, because we make bread, we're a food processing company. We are considered essential. But we make artisan overpriced bread, so, but that's a whole nother situation.
I'm gonna let Moji Solard jump in. Moji Solard, just share with us what you do. She is also a Harlem parent, she's here. And she is doing the virtual school with her four-year-old. So, let us know a little bit about what's happening with that. And we also know Harlem Network News, HarlemNetworkNews.com. But we also know that many of the children, and we're six weeks in, in the public schools, they do not have a tablet. And even if they do, where's the Wi-Fi coming from? So, that's what we're dealing with here. Okay, they've been trying to go off hotspots on their phone, and then when it shuts down. So, how is that impacting us? Once again, the pathology of racism. Moji, thank you.
Hi, I'm Moji Alawoade. I'm also the daughter of Isato, who did let me know. And part of what I've been dealing with earlier in this was even my mother's COVID diagnosis, on top of working full-time remotely in a job that wasn't a remote job two months ago, and on top of homeschooling my four-year-old, who was in preschool. And all of that, sort of, the D.O.E. had no plan, which, nobody had a plan, but the D.O.E. had no plan. So, I stopped working about a week before the school shut down or stopped going into the office. And then, then, one Sunday night, the D.O.E. was like, and we're done. And so, my partner and I had to scramble and just figure out, like, how we're gonna divvy up our work, our separate work lives, and also keep our son engaged. For a week, the D.O.E. was just closed, because I think they were caught flat-footed, and they needed to figure out what they were going to do. We were asked to apply for tablets for our school, but I think we also were considered not a high-need family, because we have two computers and two phones, and, you know. So, I think that, that in the hierarchy of where these went, I think we maybe dropped to the bottom of it. And we've been doing fine with what we have, but, you know, it'd be nice to have a tablet that we could dedicate to his work. On the flip side, also, my son is four. And four-year-olds, basically, his homeschooling work, even though the school is offering plans and ideas, is my work, right? He's not gonna sit in front of a computer. He hates the time that he has to spend in front of Zoom. And basically, I think a lot of my work is me on a Zoom conversation for work, and my son jumping around behind me. My job has transitioned over the time that we've been working remotely to a lot more of broadcast-like work. I'm on our podcast team, and I'm also on a sort of after-show video thing that we do. And so, I have to really parse out both my research for this work we do, because I work at a feminist organization that deals with reproductive rights issues primarily. And so, I have to do research, I have to keep up on what's happening, I have to keep up with all the closures, that the COVID is affecting a lot of closures and people's access to the kind of reproductive, any healthcare they would want, but specifically reproductive healthcare. And then, and so, it's me figuring that out, doing my studies, my son jumping on me, and then just trying to not let him be bored. And the schools, I will say, for my son's school and for our experience, his teachers have been, they've been responsive, and they've been trying. But how do you deliver services to a four-year-old who doesn't want to be on Zoom? It's just, no one had a plan for this. And I think that, I'm glad that the schools closed, because this is, you know, terrible. And I think, I'm glad that they decided not to open. I think, when they first closed, they said they were gonna reopen April 20th. No, I wouldn't have sent my son. If they decided that schools were opening on the 20th, I wouldn't have sent my son. I would have kept him at home. But also, I can't say I'm educating him, right? I just, that's not what he's getting now. I think the, I'm not as stressed as I could be, because he's four. This is preschool, this is not the most essential education time for him. I think that the time that he's spending with us, the first couple of weeks, I think he was very sad and lonely. He, a couple of times, we take family bike rides sometimes, and he'll be, he would say, I'd say, oh, Garvey, where are we going? And he'd say, I'd like to see my friends. And I'm like, we can literally go anywhere but to see your friends. But after a couple of weeks, you know, children are adaptable. And he, I think, has sort of accepted that the world is his parents, and him in the house. And so, we're dealing, and it's, I think that I've also had my own fluctuating experiences, again, pretty early on, all of a sudden, my mother had a diagnosis of COVID-19. And so, on top of the homeschooling I was doing, and the transitions in my work, and just figuring out how to work remotely, having not ever done that before, I had to deal with what was happening in my personal life. And I also feel very fortunate. My company was very understanding. I think one day, I was having a meeting with my supervisors, and they were like, how are you doing? And I was like, I can't. Like, I can't. And they were like, we get it, take a few days and get yourself together. So, you know, I think I had a moment, even when my mother healed, just settling in and accepting that this is our new normal, that we're not, whatever was happening before, or whatever the world was like in February, we're not gonna get back to that again. I don't see me ever going to a concert again. I'm sure it'll happen eventually, but I don't see me going to a concert again, walking into a supermarket without a mask, all these things that seemed really normal. It's not happening anymore, but...
We're in a different, and we're in a brave new world. Thank you, Moji. I'm just going to repeat, this is Harlem Network News. Please go to us at HarlemNetworkNews.com. We, you can contribute financially, you can contribute with writing and information and sharing. So, please do that, because this is us, and this is making sure that we stay informed. I'm just going to, a statement that I heard today was, and it's segwaying into our motherhood part. And it's an honor to be a mother and to have our children here, and certainly, all of the younger people here, I consider my children, too, because that's what it is to be a Harlem woman. You may not necessarily have birthed a child, but you have participated in that education and that connection. I heard a statement today, and it was Maya Angelou's statement, and it said, "When we know we have been loved, it's because we stayed alive." So, that is, to me, the epitome of what Black or Harlem women have done. You're alive, and that's how you know you were loved, because you were cared for and people sacrificed. I'm going to go to my daughter, who is my birth daughter, Maya Green Jones. Can you hear me? Can you unmute? And just share what your experience, she's also an artist, and she is also a parent, and she has two older children that have been homeschooling, as well as a college student who had to come home and complete, my granddaughter, complete her education. And we're gonna clap it up, because Sahar is officially a senior at Howard University. So, there we are. Maya?
Right, okay. Well, Happy Mother's Day, ladies. Great to see that everybody's okay, and Mama Isato, so thankful that you made it through it, and you're still, you know, journeying through, and you decided to stay home and thug it out. So, you know, from, I'm in Florida, and I feel like I'm kind of, I've been blessed to have probably a hugely contrasting experience, just in the sense that it's a warmer climate, I have the ability to go outside, I'm not contained.
Sex, sex, sex.
So, but for everyone that is in that space, you know, I continue to pray that things will get better, and we, every day, seem to learn more about it. But what I learned, what I've learned thus far, at least even about myself, is some of the angst, like, the fruit of all of this is this glorious technology. And this, and this has allowed for us to put our heads and hearts together. And it's been very, very fruitful and very productive, and even from a technological standpoint. I've just been avidly, like, just voraciously researching and looking at trends. And, you know, people have been at work. And the messaging that comes to me is that, outside of the symptoms and the observations that we've made, is that from a technological standpoint, this is a technological revolution, just like the industrial revolution. And so, I implore people to, like, if you're bored and you're fearful, go seek some knowledge. There is a company that's been on my radar that I've been looking at, and it's called Kairos, ironically, but it's spelled with a K. And that is a Black man who developed some very revolutionary facial recognition software. And essentially, this company has been taken from him within one calendar year. But all of that technology that he developed is now progressively being activated, being activated in China. And so, we're just on, we're on a, we're in a new space with reference to technological revolutions and new deployment. And so, that is an exciting thing. I think that there's a lot to look at when it comes to finance and cashless currency being exchanged. And there's a lot of homework to do. So, there's, in the midst of all of this, what I've discovered is, like, I'm painting a lot more, I'm spending a lot more time with my children. And I'm also, you know, it's just, in my situation, I have my extended family here from Chinatown. So, I'm one of 10 in a household. So, we have to, we are having to be aware of one another and employ some, you know, it's probably the opposite of some people that are hunkered down alone in a singular context. This is, this is a different thing, where it's like, okay, this is group dynamics, and being aware of other people, and kind of trying to find your own space and sacred time. So, those are, those are my observations.
How are the children doing? Because I know my grandson is nine, and you have a 13-year-old. How are they holding up?
A 14-year-old. They're doing well. The, I would say that the nine-year-old seems to just be pretty content. He has, he's enrolled in private school. And I will say that, you know, I would imagine, the school has really invested a lot in having, delivering a more robust learning experience. So, there's actually live teaching that's going on for half the day. So, he does, he's had virtual playmate, play dates. He takes karate five days a week. So, there's, there are some things that are going on, where he's pretty engaged. But, you know, it's different. And like I said, for us, it just seems to be perhaps a different experience in Florida. Like, we've been to the beach. And that's, that's, some people may look at that, like, I mean, it's just a completely contrasting experience to, it was snowing in New York. You know, like, I went to the beach yesterday. We were segregated from other people, but it's 95 degrees. So, that was, that was an option that we chose to exercise. But going forward, you know, I think that the, even the fruit of this experience, it can be whatever we want it to be. And I think a lot of people are going insular and happening upon what that is as an individual and as a collective.
Okay, well, thank you, Maya Green Jones. And I think Maya has brought up the essence of what, quote, Harlem women are, because we are a resilient people, we are a creative people, and we find ways to make it happen. We make lemonade out of lemons, we make it happen. I'm going to go quickly to Ellen, and then I'm going to come back to my entrepreneurs that are here in Harlem. And obviously, we have a lot to say, and we are very, very important, and we are significant. We are the rock of our community. And in some ways, I mean, we really haven't come together and put it out here like this. But we're not invisible. We're here, and we're standing strong, and it'll be hard to take us down, COVID or the pathology of racism. Ellen, thank you. And Ellen is here from California.
I'm in Los Angeles here.
Los Angeles, she's a native New Yorker and also Lincoln University person. Thank you. Ellen?
Well, again, our experience here in L.A. is a little different, because most people are in a home or in an open situation. Again, kind of similar to what's happening there. I live in a predominantly Black area. It's called the Black Beverly Hills, don't ask me why, but, you know, we're average people, we live here. And I guess, if you work, you know, Beverly Hills, Black, go figure. But it is gentrifying. And I think, unfortunately, COVID has really put the nail on the coffin to what was our mall in Baldwin Hills? Because all those shops are now done, they sold them all, in the midst of all of this. So, the gentrification is happening fast and being facilitated by this event, which is unfortunate. The testing in South L.A., though, happened almost immediately. So, our people were able to get tested, and people were able to get in and get tested, but you had to make an appointment. But they did put a site. But they did put a site, in fact, on my church grounds at Quinchen Christian Center. And so they were testing people there. And that has remained open. And they're testing about four thousand people a day. So that's excellent. As well as collecting blood on behalf of the Red Cross. So that's what's happening in South L.A. The deaths, recently, just this week, we've had people close pass away. For a while, it just seemed like we were not, I heard of all of my friends on the East Coast that were affected. But now, we're starting to deal it here. And it's becoming a little more personal here. And lastly, in terms of jobs, now, in light of this, we are primarily a service industry, a lot of movie industry, foods, that kind of thing. So there's a lot of people that are out of work, a lot of people that are struggling. And in the midst of this, they make an announcement that in our community, the Black Beverly Hills, right? They're going to take away our police station and start making budget cuts. Makes no sense at all. The good news is, it's a tight-knit community. So we are, we're fighting back. We're fighting back, and we are going to protest. And we are also aligning ourselves and dealing with our, from a political perspective, with the other things that are happening to Black people in our country, and particularly the Ahmaud situation. So we have signed petitions and wrote our politicians. And this is a real activist type of area.
Okay. So that's great. Thank you, Ellen. And obviously, we all have a lot to say. We're coming from the same place in different ways. I am going to go to our Harlem entrepreneurs because I think it's very critical that we hear from them. I am going to defer and go to Kim, who is Kim Harris of Harlem Hops, right here in Harlem. She is our younger entrepreneur. And then I am going to go to Janay Shabazz, who has a childcare center, Sugar Babies, who many of our children and grandchildren went to. And they are the great people they are today because they started their foundation at Sugar Babies, which is right here in Harlem. So Kim, please. Thank you.
Thank you for having me, Terry. Happy Mother's Day, everyone.
And speak up just a little bit. This is Harlem Network News. We're a little bit over time. We do see a lot of questions. We will answer the questions after. And we thank you for supporting us. Kim Harris of Harlem Hops, talk to us. Thank you.
Yes. So I think when this COVID thing happened, I believe the day that we were told that we were supposed to close down the bars, and, you know, they were just going to allow us to do takeout and deliveries only, we, it was the same day, it was like the same day my cousin had a stroke. So I was in the hospital the whole day. And earlier in the week-
I'm sorry, not to interrupt you, Kim, but you want to share what your business is, Harlem Hops? Because everybody might not know that. So please share. Thank you, Barbara.
Yeah, I have a craft beer bar in Harlem. And we've been open, well, this year will be our second year. It's a hundred percent African-American-owned craft beer bar, the first of its kind in central Harlem. And me and my partners are all HBCU alumnis. And so basically, you know, like, a few days before everything started shifted, you know, we were just having this feeling that something was happening. Like, even, you know, weeks before March, I was in Austin. I was supposed to have an event. I have two companies. I have an event production company as well. And we were doing a South by Southwest event. And I was at the airport, and I was like, I don't even think this event is going to happen. And then the next two days later, my clients said they were pulling out. So when, you know, in preparation for stuff, you know, my business partner, Kevin, who is also a schoolteacher in New Rochelle, he was saying that, you know, if I have to do deliveries by bike, I'll do them. And we were like, jokingly. But then, when it came time for everything to shift, we just hopped straight into activating a plan on how this is going to work. And we stayed open for the whole time. We've been open the whole time. It took us about a week to really get a real system implemented. And we've been doing pretty well, considering, you know, when I look at everyone around me who hasn't had the opportunity to either stay open or, you know, or just could only be open for a few days out of the week. I, you know, attribute that not only to us just being blessed and very favored, just generally speaking, but also, you know, we have a specialty product that you can't get anywhere else. So that allows us the opportunity to still thrive in this horrifying circumstance. And as I was mentioning, you know, my cousin was in the hospital. So being in a hospital, I was like, you know, it's probably not, you know, smart for me to go back into the bar. So I came home, and the first two weeks, I just stayed here. And then, as I was staying here, like, you know, like, I loaded up on all my, you know, all my, everything to help build my immune system. And during that whole time, I just was like, okay, let me just take this opportunity to just, like, eat healthy and stay, you know, clean and start, you know, mentally strengthening myself to deal with whatever it is that I'm about to go through. And I was strong for like a whole two, like, almost six weeks. And it wasn't until like last two weeks ago that I fell into this deep depression for a week. And I couldn't even, like, I didn't want to shower. I didn't want to brush my teeth. I didn't want to do anything, and I had never experienced that before. And it was really scary. So then I talked to my cousin, who's also one of my business partner in my production company. And he started, you know, creating these exercises for me to like, oh, you took a bath today. Now we're going to have a party about that. You know, he was just trying to encourage me in a way, like, did you eat today? Like, what can you do to make sure you don't feel like this tomorrow? And every day, it started improving. And, you know, like, you know, we're into a second week from, you know, going into the second week from that. And I feel so much better, thank God, because I was like, I can't live my life like this. But, you know, I'm opening, I've really stayed home most of the time. You know what I mean? I don't live in Harlem right now. And I live in like the Chelsea Hudson Yards area. And I've really been isolated the whole time. I live in a small studio apartment. I live in a really big building. A lot of people in my building had the virus. So, you know, just getting on the elevator is like anxiety. You know, going to the garbage, you know? I went to the garbage one day, and my neighbor was like, yeah, we've been sick for like two weeks. This is the first time I'm coming out. And I'm like, oh. You know? And like, just, you know, even if I want to go to like common areas, like, they allow us to go on the roof and little places. But, you know, you see people there, and you still have this, like, you know, deep anxiety, like, just to, like you said, go get your mail. So it's been, even on this phone call, I'm like, I'm noticing the anxiety talking about. It's like, I've learned to think, you know, Mama Conkey mentioned this. I've been studying meditation this whole time and learning more and more about meditation and learning how to deflect that energy so I can stay focused and, you know, visualize what it is that I want for my future and dealing through, navigating through this COVID situation, but also listening to what the university needs to tell me in order, you know, my steps are ordered in order to stay on my path. So, you know, you have so much adversity in this situation, but there's, you have to connect to something, like you said, to ground you in order to succeed and thrive through this. Because having that anxiety is affecting your immune system just-
Absolutely. Thank you. Kim, you could not have said it better because we're all taking measures. I know, like, if I'm on the elevator and, you know, like you said, we're a connecting, hugging kind of people. But I see people, they're all like trying to get on the elevator with me, and I'm like, no. And then they understand, not rude, but, you know, like, no, we're not doing that. You know, so it's really, I think it's about, as Isato said, the will to stay alive. Like, we're washing and doing, it's the will to stay alive.
I want to add something to that, though. Being on the other side of it, after you have it, it's like you feel, I feel real good that I, you know, that I, that I'm on the other side of it. But anytime I've shared it, it's like you've had the plague, and people treat you like that. So that's the other thing. So kind of be careful how you treat those of us that had it. Like, you know, you still got it, and I'm going to get it from you. So, you know, I need to get away from you. That's in the laundry room, right? So I'm just saying, be careful, you know, how you treat those of us. And then one other thing I'd just like to say, this, don't try this at home, folks. But I lost thirty-five pounds.
Oh, it'll be a hot girl summer.
Don't try this at home.
Thank you, Isato. And you're correct. People are shook. And I wasn't really even referring to anybody with COVID, but it's kind of like going in the street in Harlem, like, some people don't have their mask on, but other people do. Everybody is now doing a different kind of Harlem shuffle. When they see people, they kind of do two steps to the side and move over this way. So it's an interesting thing, but it's got a, we don't know. But the anxiety of it is not a good thing. So we're going to wrap this up. Thank you all so much. I am coming to Janay Shabazz of Shabazz. And please, Janay, thank you for persevering and getting on this call. And you're going to bring us home. And they're just going to say goodbye to everyone that has been-
Terry, I think this is a great show. I think you're doing a wonderful day, and I want to give a-
Just a little bit, if you can, Janay.
I want to give a shout out to all my sisters and my family because Sugar Babies could not have survived in Harlem without you. I know I've taken care of many of your grandchildren and their children, and it goes on. So I love you guys, and I thank you for that. But one of the things that I want to say is, you know, as a result of the support that I received from my Harlem community, we thrived to the point that Sugar Babies was able to get the center of my dreams. And everybody knows that. That's on One Hundred Thirty-Eighth Street. Everybody hasn't gone there yet. But I created this beautiful dream center where your children or grandchildren can drive and, space to be doing some gardening and restaurants and all those sort of things. And I have all kinds of resources where we study new science and all of those.
I'm sorry, can you speak up just a little bit? Because what you're saying is very important. Just try to speak.
I just, you know, so I created the center of my dreams, Sugar Babies. And it's all on the backs of the people in the community, many of the people that are here listening right now because I took care of many of their children or grandchildren. And as a result of that, I was able to develop this fantastic place for children to grow. And we had opened up in January of this year, only to have closed on March fifteenth because of COVID. And one of the things that I want to say is that my first responsibility is to keep your children safe. So I had to close the center. And yet, as a businessperson, you know, you have this fantastic place that you want children to come. So it's like you're in a place in between two lines. What do I do? Is it about business or is it about the safety of the children? And certainly, it's always going to be about the life of the children. And what I say is the answer that we have is in us. Every person on today has the answer. We have to stop looking to other groups, other organizations, other income levels to solve our problems. We have always solved our problems, and they still exist in our community. And I believe that. And I believe that we have, and that's one of the reasons why I take the time out to nurture children at a very, very early age. Because that's the kind of insight we want them to feel, you know, to know that they have the answer to their own situations and to their own problems. So this kind of thing doesn't exist. You know, we can all go and say how this happens and how we got here and whose fault it is. But we have the answer, and we can solve our own problems. And we don't need to look to other people. And everything always started from the root up, not from the top, you know? So we've got to get to the root of our issues and our situations and continue that. Because without that, we will perish. We have the answers. We don't need other people to tell us. We survived slavery. This is nothing compared to what we survived. So it's with our children. Now, somebody says to me, well, essential workers. Why aren't essential workers controlling what America does? If we're so essential, why are we listening to people who are at the other end of that? If we're the ones that are making things function at this very time that we're in despair? I mean, we only had the answer. Our grandmothers told us the answer. Our grandfathers told us the answer. We have those answers. Stop looking outside of us. Look into our community, right here. I need to survive. Everybody on here, make me survive. You know, the fact that we're talking about going to work. How are we, like Moji, you're talking about going back to work. How are they talking about going back to work when, like you said, you need someplace for your child to go? But naturally, if you ask me, Janay, is it safe for my child to come to daycare right now? Well, I'll tell you, I would put my life at it. But can I guarantee you? I could tell you some basic things that I'm going to put into place in terms of, you know, in terms of sanitary things, in terms of not maybe having as many children together. But that's a trust issue. That's not a guarantee issue. You know what I mean? So there are things that we can do. But, I mean, as a people, in terms of trusting ourselves, even in terms of making Harlem one of the places that becomes a place that is safe. Because we practice all the things that we need to practice to make each other safe.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Janay. And that is quite profound, and you have put it in the context of many, many things. And I see one of our elders, so we really now are going generationally. Mama Rashida is on the call.
Hi, everybody.
Oh, my goodness.
I made it through. I made it through.
All right. Happy Mother's Day. Happy Mother's Day, Mama Rashida. You know that-
Thank you, all of you.
The mother of us all. And I am so happy to see you. We have been concerned. We have been calling. We've been supporting Isato to support you and- So do you have any words of wisdom, Mama Rashida, to just take us out on, please? Thank you.
The best thing I could say to you is, trust the Creator. Meditate and ask Him for His guidance and His help through this. That's how I got through.
Okay. Okay. So this is a most special thing, to see Mama Rashida, to see you standing up, to see you speaking, to see you strong. So we are very, very grateful. And we're going to pretty much sign off. We're way over time. But the fact that we actually got to see and hear Mama Rashida and send you some love through this platform, this virtual platform, because we are all your daughters and we are all your granddaughters. And we love you. We love you. We love you. God is good all the time. Tina, I just want two words from you. Tina Dunkley from Atlanta Artists, what do you have to say to the world?
What do I have to say?
To the Harlem world?
Well, to the Harlem world. I miss you, number one. I miss Harlem. And I want everyone to stay as safe as possible. But use that brilliant mind of yours to travel, to find your calm, your peace. And that's going to be through music and creativity, whatever it is, be it paint- Uh, be it painting or puzzles, find ways to really assage uh, the anxiety of the situation that we must. It's gonna be a long haul. And we just need to change some habits. And I think we'll do just. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, all wonderful ladies.
Thank you. It was a pleasure. I think our host is gone.
Yeah, I think our host disappeared.
Hey, Moji.
Hey. I'm glad you liked it.
Hell, it was great. I, I should have taken a picture of the bowl.
I just wanna say to, um, Nola. Um, thank you for your work. Being on the front line and being in the hospital and continuously working to save lives and God bless you. Remember that you are loved and every day that you walk out your door, that there's a posse of women who are surrounding you and sending you light and love. For all of you who are, are essential workers, I mean, we're all essential people. But right now, in terms of hands-on, we love you and appreciate you. And for all those others, for all the women on this, um, uh, group, Happy Mother's Day. Remember to love yourselves and that you are loved. And for all of our people who may be, um, on and viewers today, um, this is a special time.
I thank you guys. Um, particularly, um, this week is really hard for me. I lost my mom two years ago. And Mother's Day does beat it. This today, it's so hard just because that's a combination of everything else.
Yeah.
It's just so hard. I'm usually very strong and pushed forward. But it's just been really hard. Um, you know, the anniversary of my mom and COVID and everything just came together and just hit me hard today and. From my, my village and I'm at, and I know it will pass. I don't stay down long. But it's really been hard. So I thank you for that, um, pastor. I think.
Thank you.
Uh, my number, my email, um, my number is nine one seven five five eight oh one four nine. For anybody that just wants a ear to listen at any point in time, any moment, in the hospital, at home. Mama Rashida, we love you.
Thank you. I need, and I need your love. Thank you, thank you, thank you, all of you.
Moji got off the line, but I wanted to tell her that I got a private playground for her child to play in it.
I'm still here and I've received that. That's exciting.
I don't know how we're still along without our hostess.
I don't know. I'm signing out.
Hi, everyone. It was lovely.
God bless everyone. Thank you.
Happy Mother's Day again.
God bless.
All right.
Love you, Mama Rashida.
Thank you, babe. I might have to come to the playground.
I'm, I'm back, ladies. Uh, we had some technical difficulty. I'm not sure what happened. But it's okay. I think what we were saying was too powerful and what we were doing is too powerful.